Molson Town Board Tuesday, February 6, 2024, regular meeting to order at 6:00 P.M. Roll call Ferguson.
Here.
Hendrickson.
Here.
Halsworth.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Styles, here. A special thanks to all the public members who are attending. Chuck Ferguson, our public works contractor, won't be here this evening. Thanks Mitch for attending, our town attorney, and Dale and Jill from our office. Appreciate everything you guys do and thanks for being here. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reviewing of the current agenda, I request a motion to accept the agenda as presented slash amended.
Make that a motion.
Motion made by Vicki and then Donald second.
I'll go second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say same. Motion carries. Under special items, agenda item A, meeting protocol, as a chair I control the floor, and I will intervene every time a board member is disrespectful, degrading, or accusatory of any other board member, contractor, SOTC, or DNR officials, or public members. And I will take the floor back and point out the misbehavior. If the misbehavior continues, I will take back the floor and will not recognize that board member during the rest of the business item at hand. If the behavior continues to another agenda item, I will take back the floor and request a motion to censor the board member by name. Board members will raise their hands and wait to be recognized by the chair before talking. Each board member will be allowed to speak twice on each motion, but only after all other board members who wish to speak have had their chance to do so. Board members will be allowed three minutes per speech. Public meetings, public members will be allowed to comment on each agenda item after the board discussion has ended and just before the call for a vote. And I requested the board members and the public to either put their phone on silence or turn them off. I appreciate that. Thank you. Item number...
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Um, in the Roberts rules, it does say for discussion periods of 10 minutes is what's allowed and then twice through the sessions. And with us adjusting and adopting Roberts rules...
Yes, sir, Dan, I understand that. And we, if you remember, we had a special rule and Roberts rules actually allow us to do a special, to have to make a special rule, and that's when we changed it to three minutes. That was done in a prior meeting. And that would have been under... And that was done in a prior meeting where we had a special rule where we changed that. It was all voted upon by the board and agreed to by the board. I request a motion to suspend trustee Halsworth for the rest of this meeting and have him leave the building or be removed due to him being disrespectful and calling a board member a name during the trustee input during the January 23rd, 24th meeting. May I have a motion?
Make a...
Motion made by Vicki. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second it. I will start the discussion. If there are any questions of what happened at the meeting, we can play the recording if needed to. In past meetings, when people have called board members names, that person was removed by law enforcement and also that person's family was removed by law enforcement. So precedence has been set that when board members are called names, either by the public or by the citizens, that the board member or that person will be removed. Any further discussion? Yes, Dan?
Yes, sir. What was the name that you were called?
Dan, I'm not going to go into the name of what was called because I'm not going to repeat that name.
Well, I'm just asking, sir, so I know the severity of it. I'd like to know.
You can listen to the tape.
Okay. Go ahead.
Because what is it? It's hard to tell what he said, but a name was called.
Okay, well, I...
And what the name was is irrelevant. The fact that it happened is what the fact is. Yes, sir, Dan, your second chance, yes.
Yes, and then, you know, as it says in Roberts rules also, you know, it should have been brought up at the meeting then if there was a problem with the issue at that point and then addressed there. And as it says, if the person continues to be where he won't bring it back to order or continues discussion or continues on, then yes, there may be a problem. And yes, then when the process of looking at censorship or any other circumstances may occur. And with that, when you asked for the meeting to come back to order and the discussion of what I had brought up that night and that I expressed, once you brought the meeting back to order, I did let the meeting come back to order and did not continue to override or continue to talk.
And what I'd like to reply back to that is, once I had to use the gavel to tell you, Dan, you need to come back to order, I am the president of the board, then you made a comment to that also. So...
I have the recording if you wanted to...
Yeah, I want to hear it.
Was that at the, was that at the end of the...
Executive session.
No.
No.
Trustee. Trustee input, I'm sorry. Trustee input. Yeah, it was executive session, we came to discuss it.
So are we suggesting that this violates the code of ethics conduct policy?
Yes.
Of the order?
Yes.
It continues to violate.
With our corporate limits the way they are now. That's it, what now?
And my position is that we can still...
I don't know what...
I was just going to say, I'm not saying that I didn't have this like block out. I don't have a second. Absolute outcome of what happened, but I think it's worth just checking it to see what...
See what our citizens do.
If there is any flexibility with...
Until you get to...
There may not be, you know, and then they try to run there, so I just think it's worth maybe checking it too.
That is the section B of the meeting.
Yeah. Wasn't it at the end of the meeting?
No. It's at the end of the first meeting before we went into executive session, that trustee input.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know I was going to... Sorry, everybody.
Yep.
Um, let's see.
Twenty dollars a service to the users and then that extra $3, it's in there, some are $2 or $3 in there. That money is used to place and move those dumpsters. So if somebody... Should be closing.
Wondered if you had any information on that we're supposed to be doing PFA testing?
So is it...
Are you sure? Is that the...
That's the...
That's a trustee...
That's a few lost controls, so...
That's a class action suit that...
Mm-hmm.
So do we need to do that test? It says you do if we want to participate in that settlement.
And not with...
This is right towards the end of the first meeting.
Hmm, yeah, but it's trustee input.
Make a decision on that.
I think the right...
Yeah, I think maybe what we will do is do some research and we'll put it on the agenda for next month to look at it.
And...
Research on the cost of the PFA testing?
Yeah, the PFO.
A lot of times that the deep wells aren't really affected by it, but some more shallow wells, wells that are influenced by... Wool Rivers or streams.
I'm checking the... Wait, are the girls... We're not talking about...
Thank you.
Um, I know we've had the...
Oh, that is trustee...
That was trustee input.
That was your input on that question.
Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say same. Motion carries. And now we're on item number 15, items from the citizens.
And what costs?
There will be no action taken on these items if you want to bring citizens. If you have any questions in service, the comments. If no items from citizens, we'll go to trustee input. Dan?
I just think that you know with transparency and whatever, you don't need to be a thing or having no discussion on simple items of order is what they are, but then if you listen to the feelings of the dumpster situation, that could be a quite easily handled circumstance, but I do understand the circumstances of the micromanaging that has takes place and...
Excuse me, Dan, I will... I understand that, Dan. I will take the floor back. Dan, Dan, I am the...
Please.
I am the chair, Dan, I take the floor back.
Thank you.
I take the floor back. We are not going to sit here and badmouth anybody else on the board, talk ridiculous, sir, not doing that.
No, sir, thank you, Jerry.
That will... Nope. That's... Nope.
That's it.
Uh, Donald?
That was it.
Well, that means...
I didn't ask for a second.
Yep. No, we don't, we don't...
I just...
That's okay, but we don't do that, okay? We don't do that.
There you missed it. It's there.
It's there.
Wondered if you had any information on that we're supposed to be doing PFA testing?
Yeah.
That's what I was curious about. That's the, that's class action.
We listened, we listened to it, there's a lot of citizens that's listening to it over and over. It is hard to see what Danny did call me, but he did call me a name. One of the board members even asked after that, made the comment, what did you call him?
Participate in that settlement.
Jared Bear.
Jared Bear.
Jared Bear.
Should we find out before we...
Chair Bear?
Make a decision on that?
I think maybe what we will do is do some research.
Connie, what did you think that it was?
It's very good.
Okay, just have it.
I have a little bit of this table.
And...
Research on the cost of the PFA testing?
Yeah, the PFO. A lot of times that the deep wells aren't really affected by it, but some more of the shallow wells, wells that are influenced by Wool Rivers or streams.
I'm checking the... Wait, are the girls... We're not talking about... Thank you.
Okay, Vicki?
Um, I know we've had the, for Molson Max had a good turnout for their mixer.
Oh, how it's hard, and they're... What is it?
Just tell me what's...
It's...
Okay, just go ahead.
You all heard it. You all heard it. What was it? It wasn't... Turn it off.
It was...
It's Jared Bear.
I think it's Jared Bear.
Okay.
Well, other people thought it was a name that dealt with, within a religion, of people within a religion that were control freaks, that controlled everything.
What did you think it was then? What does that mean?
Jesuit.
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 No, it's Jared Bear.
It's Jared Bear.
Yeah. But the thing is, the fact is...
Slow down. Here. First of all, you know, I saw the agenda and I thought, well, you know, I'm sure they're going to ask me what I think of the matter. And so I was trying to find in your code of ethics what the violation is. What is it? Is it a... It doesn't sound to me like it was a derogatory term.
Okay, but if you listen to some of the other thing, when he told, called me a micromanager...
Well, that's not a problem, though. No, you shut up.
I'm not saying that.
I'll talk, sir. Okay, to say that you're a micromanager, that's not offensive. That's just his opinion.
And I'm not...
You have your opinions when...
And I didn't bring that up. The thing is, is the name that it's called.
The trustee styles, what I'm going to tell you is that you shouldn't have cut him off. You should have let him talk. You may not like what he has to say, he may not like what you have to say. You don't have to respect him, he doesn't have to respect you, none of you guys do. But let him have his say. We've had Vicki...
I agree with you now.
Also say some things in her own defense, which we should hear. Okay, which trustee Halsworth would cut off before. I frown upon us setting any kind of precedent on suspensions and censures, you know, unless it falls within an extraordinary circumstance. Remember a year ago, we talked about implementing an ordinance of what the conditions would be if we wanted to remove somebody? And what did we have? We have to have four votes in favor of that.
That's for permanent removal.
Right, and so, but even a suspension, I mean, you're disenfranchising, and this holds true for all of you. You're disenfranchising the people who voted for him, and if it happened to you, you're disenfranchising the people that voted for you. Every one of you guys has the right to express your opinions.
But not call people names.
And I, and I'm not saying that. Obviously, if it's profanity, if it's some of the things I've been called over the years, whether it was in coaching or in court, yeah, it's offensive and it needs to be handled. But if the term was Jared Bear, I don't know anybody who would find that pattern to be offensive. I wasn't here... Well, there's been a lot of disrespect.
Oh, I know that.
From everybody around here.
I know that.
And I would really like to see you guys come together and instead of getting angry, say, I don't like that comment, right then and there. It would have helped if I had been here probably, but I wasn't.
It would never, would it happen if it not in your presence?
I was getting a colonoscopy.
And it wouldn't have happened in your presence?
Lucky you.
So I have that.
There's no doubt that it wouldn't have happened if he was here.
And so, I don't know if you care about my opinion, but if you want it, I'd like some time to review this. I'd like to go through the rock, because I think you're basing the penalties on Roberts rules of procedure, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And so there's a lot of things that I would want to consider in that context and in the context of the code of ethics and exactly know what was said. You know, if it's some, if it's some racial slur or racist slur, that's a whole different deal.
It was a...
Then Jared...
We felt it was religion.
But you're getting, we're getting different viewpoints on that, and so I'd have to consider all of them. And you should too, because maybe we didn't hear what we thought we heard, and maybe we heard what we wanted to hear, you know? I would say, I would ask, you don't want to go down this path. Make sure I'm at every meeting, all right?
No more colonoscopies, Dan.
No.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So you guys can do your thing here, but I'm, if you want my opinion, I need to look into it and work the problem and, and, because this is a serious situation.
Yes, it is.
And so...
Go ahead.
So is what you're saying then, it is okay for one of the trustees to downgrade the person in public?
I think the term I heard was...
I'm talking about different, I'm talking about different incidents that have happened as far as accusing somebody of something that they didn't do. And that person was pretty feisty and, and, you know, I don't think, oh, I don't think, I'm sorry, I missed, you know, I, I... I think it's gotten out of hand several times in a meeting with the snitty remarks and not complimenting anybody or anything, but yet we're not supposed to say anything.
I'm not sure if that, I'm just trying to deal with one issue at hand here.
Well, this has happened many, many, many times.
Six years.
Well, then it should be dealt with accordingly in terms of if there's one violation, then it should be a, maybe an apology requested or censure like you talked about or... Yeah, go ahead.
I think Linda was going to say something first.
Linda, exactly. In the past, we've made comments and notes and put it in the person's file. And also, they've been spoken to in a meeting directly about that situation or in an executive session. It's a, I think that I personally do not think that this is the way to start this issue.
Thank you.
And then second, are we ready to discuss the SD, DNR part of this issue or are we still only on the other part?
I didn't put that into the, into the motion.
It'd be another motion, though.
Let me read something. Just I found this on the internet, under Roberts rules of order. Every organization has the right to enforce its rules and expect ethical and honorable conduct from its members. Most organizations have discipline problems from time to time. A discipline problem may be something as simple as a member misbehaving in a meeting or an officer overstepping the boundaries of his or her office. Problem is not correct and when it arises, it can escalate into something more serious, requiring that someone be removed from office or membership. However, the organization can often solve discipline problems by taking the member or officer aside and talking with him or her about it, which saves both the member and the organization embarrassment. Common discipline problems that organizations encounter and how to handle them, many problems that cause difficulties in organization or a result of inflated egos, personality conflicts, or ignorance of proper procedures. If egos, egos or personalities are the root cause, it takes diplomacy, patience, and skill to solve these problems. And then it goes on to talk about unruly members of meetings and then the possible penalties. This should be done in a, in a step sequence, okay? If there's a problem with what he said, then discuss it then and there calmly or outside the presence of the meeting or in an executive session, if you will. And then if the board agrees that there should be some reprimand, it goes in the file. Suspension, this is the first I've heard of anything in this vein. Suspension is extraordinary, misremoval is extraordinary. I'm just saying I'm cautioning you that you need to really consider how you're going with it. And so I would try to slow down and think it through.
Vicki? So over the last six years, why was that never in place when I was being beat up, verbally abused and flogged?
Sir, you sat...
You heard it.
No, that's not fair. I'm not here to, I'm not the judge or the jury, okay?
Okay, when you have four other board members that don't side, or I shouldn't say side, um...
I'm looking for...
And I'm not saying I disagree with you at all, because I heard it.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I heard it.
And nobody came to my defense and it's like, okay, now it's happening and it's continuing to escalate in every sense of the word, every meeting.
Well, I hope this isn't some kind of retribution.
No, this is not, it just needs to stop.
I agree.
And I want to see it stopped.
Uncomfortable for everybody.
But, you know, it seems ironic to me that the party that did all the flogging and the verbal abuse, when he does it, it's okay and it's acceptable. And oh, shame on us for calling him on it.
Okay, well, I'm going to skip, stick with the topic of micromanaging. I don't find that offensive, okay? That's his opinion, you don't have to agree with it, none of you do, maybe you do, I don't know, doesn't matter to me, but...
There was a...
The name calling, I don't see that, if that's what was said, Jared Bear, I don't see that as a viable offensive conduct. But again, that's my two cents. You can consider it or if you want further consideration, I'd be happy to input.
Go ahead.
But a lot of these things can turn on the tone somebody uses. I didn't hear his tone being that negative in that recording. And he did have the floor and then he got caught off. So I'd like to see, you know, unless there's some unruly behavior that we think this through before you move forward with it, that's my two cents, so I'll shut up.
Okay, go ahead. Now, I haven't really had my two times, go ahead.
What about the blatant disregard for when it was called back to order by the board president, it was just blatantly disregarded? Because I know, and I'm, yeah, I'm bringing up the past.
But I had to use the gavel and then even then he didn't stop.
Yeah, that's not good. Should stop.
And I take, I take name calling of board members very seriously. And so did the board in the past when named and the name that was called was not a derogatory name, it was the name of Christmas. But yet that individual was removed from the meeting by law enforcement and his whole family was removed. And that wasn't a derogatory word. That happened.
It got a little tense that night.
Yes, it did. There was more to it than...
There was more than that. It was more than...
But what we try to do is to limit that so it don't get to that point. I have on here, I take offense to anybody who calls someone's names. I have on here a recording where you called a public member a name.
Who?
Me. It's on the recording.
Okay, well, that...
And there's also a, there's also another public member out there who's looking at a lawsuit potential because of, one of the things is because something that you said...
What did I say? What are you talking about?
Um...
What?
Of a potential, I'm just...
Wait a minute, what?
There...
That's a whole different subject, but all I'm saying is that with very...
Something is a lawsuit because of something I said?
That's one of her concerns.
Not that you said, but the other, our...
No, but what?
Board members, board members said.
I heard a... I heard a comment that there's a lawsuit, potential lawsuit over something that Mitch Johnson said. Is that not right?
That is what's...
And that's one of the things she said.
And that is none of his business to say anything like that, and it has nothing to do with this meeting. I understand why you're interested in him saying that, and why you want to know what's up. But really, it has nothing to do with right now, and should not have been brought in.
Yep. And what I'm saying is that we need to be careful as a board what we say.
Does the finance officer get to say anything?
Sure.
Sure. If we just lost her because of this, you guys have really lost. Because you know what? You're not gonna find another person to replace her quickly. And I'm not, I'm not too far out. She just walked out. She was supposed to be here for planning and zoning, that's why she was here. And if we just lost her, you guys, this is bad. And now that's on tape.
And I agree, if we did lose her, that's bad. But the thing is, there's recordings after recordings after recordings, like she had mentioned in the past, where people have not been treated correctly. When I tried to call it back to order, he called me a name. Precedence has been set in the past, when someone calls a board member a name, they've been removed out of the meeting. So, and that was a public member. So, why should...
Never had a board member removed.
No.
It was a citizen.
That was right, a citizen. And the board member should be, the board member should be, should be at a higher standard.
Maybe I'm saying, we need to take a little time out here. Pause, recess.
I make a motion that we table this at four minutes of the session.
We gotta, we gotta take care of the other motion case.
And then I withdraw that motion, and make a motion that we table this and go into executive session. Maybe not tonight, but it would be a good idea to do it in executive session.
Well, I'll tell you what, folks. I sat out there as a public member for over two years. I was called just about everything there was to be called. I was called by you Mitch, I have on this tape right here, names. You yelled at me, you screamed at me, told me, "Answer the question." I asked a yes or no question. I'm not gonna tolerate any of that stuff. I'm not gonna tolerate it from him.
Why am I being wrong?
Because in the past, you've never stopped Dan from what he's done.
It's not my job to do that.
Yeah, but also now I'm the bad guy, and you're trying to stop me from doing my stuff.
I'm not saying you're a bad guy, I just don't agree with this.
I request a vote on the, I request a vote on the original motion. Your motion wasn't seconded, and so it died.
Well, I didn't realize I would, I would second it, table it, and do it in executive session.
Then find, you guys find somebody else.
No, Jerry.
No.
No, no, no.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna be here. I'm not gonna sit here with, after all the things he's done, the bad things he talked about in the meeting with the state, the state listens to the recording. We're trying to get right now, we're trying to get money, you know, to give them to relieve our debt, our $200 a day fine. And he starts out, first thing in the meeting, blaming the state for all the problems.
That's his opinion.
Let's do this.
That's right, his opinion, but what does that do to us?
I don't know what it does.
We're not gonna, they're not even gonna call us to get the meeting now.
He speaks for himself.
That is right, and I speak for myself. And right now Mitch, I do not think, have you in the past, since I've been coming to meetings, that you have done what's best for the town?
Really?
You set the town, you got lawsuits against the towns?
Okay, Jerry, calm down.
No, I don't. Ask some of the other board members whether.
Let's do this in executive session.
No, I'm done. No, I'm done, I'm done.
No.
All right?
No, no, no.
And Mitch? What's on this tape right here is going to the ethics board on the board for lawyers. Yes?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting for this evening.
I would like to second that.
Maybe we'll just take a pause.
No, Mitch, we're tired of taking pauses when it comes to you protecting him on everything he does.
Don't look at me. Don't give me the eyes.
I'm just looking at what we're having with the motion.
I don't even know anymore.
I mean, no...
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting for tonight.
I would second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.